Good afternoon, everybody. It is Thursday, April 21st, 2022 at 5:00 PM, and I will call to order the Free Town Board Selecting Meeting. We will be starting off today with a presentation from Planning Tech Victoria D'Antoni. Is that correctly? As for a presentation on the multifamily zoning requirements for the MBTA communities. So over to you, Victoria.
Yeah, hi, I'm Victoria D'Antoni for the record, according to commission. So Section 18, Chapter 358 of the Acts in 2020 introduced a new Section 3A to the zoning act. So this statute states that an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides at least one district of reasonable size. Multifamily housing has to be permitted as a right with no age restrictions that's suitable for families with children with a minimum growth density of 15 units per acre and be located not more than a half mile from the commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable. So they have different, there is different types of MBTA communities. There's a subway or light rail, bus, commuter rail, or MBTA adjacent, which is what? Free Town is. Um, Free Town is MBTA adjacent because we do not have a commuter rail within the town. Um, so this is our current status, which would require 700 in the capacity to have 752 new units. You also have to have 10% of the total housing stock. Um, so basing, basing it off the 2020 census, um, that would be 349 units, but the minimum units you need to have is 750, so it bumps it up to that. Um, Free Town is in a unique position because the initial list of the 175 MBTA communities does not take into account the South Coast rail stations that are being put in. Um, but it's most likely that they will be taken into account and there will be a shift in Free Town's classification and we will be, we will be becoming a commuter rail MBTA community, which requires 15% of the housing stock. Um, but we still wouldn't meet that minimum 750 anyway, so then it would just get bumped up to the 750. So in the draft guidelines, it explains what reasonable size means and this is, has to be a district that comprises of at least 50 acres of land and at least 25 of those acres have to be continuous, contiguous, I'm sorry. The actual size of the district may need to be larger to accommodate the required minimum number of units. Um, they did say an overly district is acceptable, um, but no portion less than five acres were counted towards the requirement because they want to avoid having a bunch of little parcels spread out. Um, and as I said in the previous slide, um, we need to provide a minimum of 10% multifamily units as a percentage of the total housing stock. Um, but because, um, that number is lower than 750 and 750 is the minimum, we would get bumped up to that. Minimum growth density, it has to be 15 units per acre, which is subject to the limitations of Section 40 of Chapter 131, which is Wetlands Protection and Title V. So this has to include land occupied by public rights of way, any recreational, civil, commercial, and other non-residential uses. Determining suitability for families with children means no, you can't have any restrictions on age, like it can't be a 55-plus community. Um, the size of the units, the number of bedrooms, um, and the number of occupants. So ideally, um, uh, the location of this district is supposed to have reasonable access to a transit station. Um, so they really wanted the district in half, within a half mile of a transit station, but we do not have one, nor do we have, um, we don't border a community with a transit station within the half mile. So some other examples they gave of a reasonable location is near an existing downtown village center, near an RTA bus stop or line, or to choose a location with existing facilities that can be redeveloped for multifamily housing. So DHCD has to make a determination of compliance and the town would have to request that. Um, so you could receive interim compliance to allow time to create or amend, um, an existing district. Um, you would have to send written notice that, um, you are going to comply with this and make a new district or amend an existing one by December 31st, 2022. And they would want an action plan to be created and submitted by July 1st, 2023. And then from there, you would implement the action plan, adopt the zoning amendment, and you would eventually make a request, um, for a determination of full compliance. So some of the effects of non-compliance are losing out on certain grant opportunities. Um, some of them include the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. DHCD may, may take non-compliance into consideration when making other discretionary grant awards. So that's something to keep in mind. Um, so how do we comply this year? So by May 2nd, 2022, um, we need to make a presentation to the Select Board, which is what I'm doing right now, and submit an MBTA community information form, which I will be submitting that next week. Um, and submit updated GIS parcel maps. Um, if, if the ones, if they need updated ones, if they're older than 2020, but DHCD or, or the MBTA will contact the communities that need to provide updated maps. So by December 31st, 2022, we need to notify them that either no existing district complies, um, or we're gonna amend an existing one, and submit a proposed action plan. Um, so it's important to note that these guidelines that were created so far are in draft form and there was a comment period through March 31st, 2022. So right now, they are reviewing those comments and they may revise the guidelines and they'll submit a final draft, a final guideline. Uh, many towns and collective bodies like the Mass Municipal Association and other organizations have submitted comments, um, to the MBTA, DHCD as we wait issuance of the final guidelines and that these could or could not change. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Very good.
Thank you.
So, um, I have some questions, not necessarily for you, but just maybe Debbie or anybody. So how big of a deal is it if we are not compliant and miss out these grants? I just wanna put that on the record.
So.
Is this one, Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, it depends, right? Here, it's a sort of this catch-22 with this because we are getting an MBTA station, right? So if we are to enact the requirements of this bylaw requiring zoning at 15 units per acre.
Yeah.
Our infrastructure doesn't work with that, right? The septic systems is what we have. We don't have sewer. The grant that would help us get sewer is the Mass Works Infrastructure Grant. So that is one that's directly affected. So it's sort of like this catch-22 for us. One of the reasons why I wanted to stay in compliance, right? You know, we'll, we'll be in compliance, um, with, with having this presentation and have Victoria complete the form next week. It keeps us to imply compliance for the current.
Yeah.
Grants that I've applied for. So I think the town as a whole, or, or, you know, needs to really decide on whether they want to develop that area to 15 units per acre. We do have an Olay district currently there, the PMA, that, uh, the Planning Board spent quite a bit of time on a few years back. That probably, uh, has a pretty good density, but not 15 units per acre.
It's like seven, I think.
Yeah. Um, even I believe when I afford to be affordable housing, I think it's eight, right? So this is quite a density. Uh, so I think we probably have to look at what we have for surrounding land around the MBTA station because it's not that much available.
You mean, a lot of it's highway.
Right.
Right? And then, and then you have Stopper Shop and you have coparts. Like I'm thinking of what's radar, like those are big pieces of land, right?
Yeah, I, you know, so I think my thought process is this. If you wanted to get sewer and pursue the sewer, you need to get in compliance with this. And, and you, and it also gives us the argument of, another argument of why we need sewer because, because of this. So there is sort of that, the car, you know, the chicken and the egg.
Yeah.
Which, do you, if you want sewer, I think you need to do this and that will further our argument. And, uh, you know, I have, in my grant applications, I have certainly cited this as an issue for us when I've asked for engineering cost for the sewer. Hey, you, you know, you're telling us we have to change the zoning, but we don't have the infrastructure in place. So in order to get the infrastructure, we need these grants. And so I have prefaced the last few grants on the sewer definitely on this. So it will be, uh, a decision that needs to be made.
So what I didn't realize until this presentation is that, like, we need to be in compliance regardless of the MBTA station going in.
Right, because we're a budding, uh, a budding town, right? And so, which is, I, I don't quite get that.
Yeah, yes. Because of Lakeville?
Be, uh, I don't, I, maybe.
Must be Lakeville.
Yeah.
I will tell you that.
It's the only budding train station I can think of.
In the, um, serpent meetings that I did attend, um, and different meetings I have attended, we're not the only community screaming like, hey, our infrastructure cannot carry this density.
Just schools.
You know?
Right? Like, what, like that's gonna be a problem.
So I don't know. It'll be interesting to see when they come down, if they change any of their regulations because they're currently draft. And so I will tell you that there were many, many communities in Serpent. I don't know what your experience is, Victoria, because I've kind of backed away since you've come on board. But there were many communities in the same saying, we can't do this. Like, this is not feasible for us. So I think maybe you might see some, or they say, yeah, you gotta do it, but here's the grant money and this is how.
Yeah, that, that, see, that's something we can work with.
So I think we might, you know, it's still preliminary and I think, uh, this presentation keeps us in compliance.
Okay, that's great.
So.
Yeah.
I think it's tough to, it's hard that they're telling us almost like we need to make decisions, but then they're at the same time saying that things can change. So it's like, do we sit back and wait? I guess it's more of a question, like, you know, a question, but.
Yeah.
Do we start trying to act upon it? So it sounds like the Planning Board already did something. Do we try and have anyone else involved to overlook that stuff and say, you know, based on traffic flow and other things, you know?
Well, one of the things to keep in mind, obviously, is that any zoning bylaw change needs to go to a town meeting and I believe has to get two-thirds of vote. So you have to factor that in, that it's not something that just.
We can, we just can't make the decision, right?
Right, it, it has to go to town meeting.
Which is interesting because then, if, if they decide to not be in compliance, right? Going forward, like, I know we'll be in compliance with this year for doing this presentation and, you know, submitting the GIS maps and all that stuff. But when it comes to us actually having that, we're gonna lose, we won't get the grants if we don't get. That puts us in a very interesting situation.
Again, it's just all about information, right? That's, that's sort of my, been my soundbite this week. We need, you know, we need to be able to have a way to get information out to townspeople so they make the decision that's.
Yeah, I think it's important that we, in detail, can explain like the, what those grants can do, or what the impact of us not getting these types of, these grants will be to the town, right? For our budget and just for, you know, services that we provide and.
Isn't that, that Mass Works grant is a great grant and, and so in the past, you need to show that you're gonna get 100 new jobs to qualify. So that's been a, a, an ongoing issue with Free Town trying to get businesses to say they're collectively gonna hire 100 new people in current, in coming years. But in my conversations recently with American, that looks like they will be.
Yeah.
So we will finally qualify, um, on some level. So, um, hence, one of the reasons I'm trying to get the engineering piece done because for Mass Works, it needs to be shovel-ready. But also because we will actually probably be able to qualify based on my conversations with local businesses, so.
That's great.
So, you know, it's just keeping it all together and that everything line up the way it needs to line up. But this definitely is a planning board, um, issue that needs to, they need to work it through and, and decide, uh, on the zoning and they would be the ones ultimately, I think, that would bring it before town meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Victoria. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You did a great job, Victoria.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we finished on agenda item one and two, correct?
Correct.
All right, so now I'll kick it over to Board of Health. Jared?
All right. So first up, the discussion vote on approval of application to Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance Pharmacy, which is, um, for vaccines to obtain government contract and pricing. So, uh, unfortunately Lori is not here right now, but, um, she did send over. So basically, uh, for instance, a dose of, um, standard flu dose, you are looking at $173.92 with the contract or $184.46 without. So, um, that's just one of the two. Um, so there is some cost savings somewhere around $100 based on those 100 doses. I mean, on those 10 doses, sorry. And then, um, so really, there's, I, I'm not seeing any downside to doing it. Um, it's basically grouping with other municipalities in order to get better pricing.
Should be, yeah, just more economies of scale.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So, um, so I guess, anyone have any questions on that?
No.
No.
Okay, so I guess with that, I will entertain a motion that we approve the application for, approve to do the app, or to submit the application to Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance Pharmacy for vaccines to, for the vaccines, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Discussion vote to approve the agreement between Massachusetts Health Offices Association and the town of Free Town to receive $11,760 in funds to be used for the Free Town Local Public Health Response. So this is an interesting one. It looks like they, they kind of gave us the money a little bit late, but they, um, they did, you know, there's, um, different things that we can spend it on. It's limited as to what we can spend it on. Hold on.
I think I saw, saw page 28.
Yeah, um, so allowable uses for the funding to include case investigation and contract tracing, which, um, according to what Lori had told me was above and beyond what we currently do. Vaccination efforts and testing efforts. So, um. Sorry. So she had a list of stuff that, um, she put together for us that she would need to include an iPad or laptop for the public health in our Steve's. Currently, she's using her own and going out into the field with that. Um, a vaccine freezer to obviously keep everything in compliance and, uh, good standing, whatever. A cool cube, which is a portable vaccine storage with portable carp for off-site clinics and homebound vaccination programs. Outside storage container to store Sharps containers between pickups, EpiPens, fridge and freezer, tag 2L data logger, uh, case investigation, contract tracing staffing, uh, vaccine supplies, which includes syringes, needles, Band-Aids, alcohol wipes, Sharps container, and vaccination effort staffing. Um, so according to Lori, even with obtaining all this, we still wouldn't hit our total. Cause I had asked her originally if we could put this in order of how she, you know, she deemed responsible, like what she thought we should get. And she said, I will, but we're still gonna stay below that threshold, so.
Gotcha.
And then, do you guys have any questions?
How many vaccines are we still doing today? Do we do it all week or that's just on a per-case basis?
Yeah, so a lot of them are the homebound. So it's been, it comes in stages, right, where she's done. She did the initial doses and then went out for the second and then she's gone off of boosters and now I don't know where she stands as far as if, you know, because obviously the new booster is coming out every so often. Um, now I think they're on with the second booster. Um, I'm not sure what, so it's a lot of the, uh, homebound people that she's having to do it for, right? So.
Now, are we using mostly Pfizer? Are we using the, you know, I know the freezer was a big issue with the Pfizer. It has to be Sub-Zero. Uh, is that what it's for, mostly Pfizer?
Yeah, yeah, uh, and I don't recall which one, hey, I don't remember which one was that. Sure, I'd wanna say it was Pfizer, but I don't have yet.
That was the post, the COVID one.
Yeah, and then also, um, you know, even regular flu shots. She's administered regular flu shots, so.
So my, my thing is you get more use out of it down the road, especially if you combine the flu and everything else, so that's a, a great idea.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and it's really, you know, obviously for her, the biggest thing is to go after the, the people who are homebound.
Absolutely, so.
Trevor, do you have anything?
No, no, it seems pretty straightforward. Free money. And we're gonna be able to use it for, you know, uh, to help Lori's efforts here, I think it's great.
Yeah, absolutely. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement, uh, between the Massachusetts Health Offices Association and the town of Free Town to receive $11,760 in funds to be used for Free Town Local Public Health Response.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so.
I think you kind of covered.
I think I covered and applied with it.
So this is, yeah, they're related. It's just a spending plan.
Yeah, so, so I guess that's.
Yeah, so I mean.
Maybe we should vote on that.
Yeah, we'll vote on that, so I'll make the motion to approve the spending plan.
A second motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're, next on the agenda is the, go over the budget. Finance committee is not here yet, so, uh, I think we'll have to go to, yeah. So I'll adjourn motion to go to recess until the finance committee comes.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, um, back from recess, I guess I'll entertain a motion to return to open session.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And I will open the finance committee meeting at 5:57.
Okay, so I'm gonna mostly let the finance committee kind of drive the bus here.
Okay.
Um, one request is that we do, uh, library first because of a conflict meeting. And then I just, this is the order that we've kind of planned. We see if this works for everybody. So we'll do library, treasure tax collector, building and maintenance, fire, and, um, administration, and then accounting. Cause Kim has to be here anyways for everything, so.
I thought it was because you were saving the best for last.
That, that is what.
I know it that one.
Okay, so library is the hot seat.
Which is here.
That, this is the hot seat. And I guess we should probably try to set some ground rules, kind of how we wanna go about this. I mean, I don't, if something's level funded, I don't know if it really requires any conversation. Um, I think maybe we should just, if anyone has any questions to the department head or any kind of questions about specific increases, this is, you know, we'll speak of that, of them. But if you have a different approach, I'm totally open to suggestions, but that seems to be the best path that I've seen, though. Okay?
Hi, I'm Nicole, the library director, in case Brittany doesn't know. Does that mean we start with a question or should I just?
I mean, I guess, yeah, if we, Kim, I'll give a quick overview of that stuff first.
Yep, so, um, overall, the budget increased about 19,000. Um, 14, almost 50,000 of that was payroll. Um, most of that was, uh, contract-related. Um, and then we also had a longevity. Um, the biggest increase on the expenses is the books and magazines. And for those who don't know, I have a state requirement. I have to spend 19% of my budget, which, um, on materials. So it's about 36,000 is what that requirement is. I usually go a little bit under because I have trust funds to, um, do the rest of that money. So I don't know, any questions about anything?
So these books and magazines, are they like subscriptions or do you, uh, are you looking for books to buy in bulk?
So, no, we don't buy in bulk. We, we, myself and the other librarians, we do the collection development. So we do our research, see what books are popular, what books and subjects that we're missing. Magazines, we usually pay for the year. So those are our subscriptions that we just renew every year. Um, and then the books and magazines also includes like DVDs, CDs. Um, audiobooks also includes like non-traditional items. So things that are like, we have hotspots that we check out, puzzles that we check out. We also have kids' kits, so all those things fall under that. And so, um, like I said, myself and the other librarians, we do our research to make sure that the collection that we have is well-rounded and suits the needs of what the patrons are looking for.
We're still with sales, right?
Yes, and we're so, so we're in sales, so yeah. So we also are.
All of that stuff is available.
Yep, yep, and that's, we have to make sure that we hit those requirements because otherwise we would not have those things available. So if we don't hit that, like, number, then we would not be able to borrow from other libraries.
Right.
So that's why it's important to make sure you hit that number.
And were your, any of your employees increased to 36 hours or were they already, already?
So, um, Brittany and I are at 35 and then Alyssa was at 30. We budgeted her for 33 last year. And then we increased her to 35 this year so that we can, you know, offer more. The reason we did 36 is so that when somebody's sick or on vacation, I have a little bit of wiggle room to be able to cover that shift. Cause, um, well, I know both of them are gonna be rolling over vacation time, so I know I'm gonna have to have a lot of extra to be able to cover those shifts. Um, so that's mostly what that's for, is just cover those shift ones in a while. And also too, when I have programming, a lot of that has to be done offsite. So this is also to make sure I can have staff at the buildings as well to make sure.
So of the three, two were already scheduled at 35 hours?
Yes, myself and the senior librarian are already.
And the other was 30 and being bumped to 35?
Yes, we actually already bumped her this year because we had a little bit of extra money. And so that's more to just, like I said, be able to offer more and then also to retain her so that we can keep her.
How many hours a week are the libraries open?
So, um, I know East Free Town is open 26 hours a week. I don't know off the top of my head how many hours the other one is, but it's open Mondays from 12 to 5, Wednesdays from 10 to 7, and Fridays from 12 to 5 as well. So whatever that, whatever that math is.
That is 27.
Yeah.
29.
So they're both open about, and so, um, and like I said, then, especially like the cataloger, she does a lot of her work when the library is closed because she doesn't have an office. So when East Free Town is closed, she does all her like cataloging, which is stuff that you need to be able to focus for. So not all the work, not all the hours that you work are gonna be when the library is open. Some of them are done off hours, off hours, I guess. So especially for me too, like when I have my reporting and other stuff, I need to be able to have time away from the desk, you know?
And you have to be at the library for this?
Yes.
We all start with that one.
Everyone get here? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Hope you make your meeting in time?
Thank you, plenty of time.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so next.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good one.
You have a great time.
Yeah. Next would be treasure tax collector. Do I have all these? Yeah.
You have them, let's just flip through the book, it's not the easiest thing.
Hello. So yeah, same thing, quick overview and then if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Yep, what order do you have them in, Patty?
It might be or, easiest if you put them in numerical order. No? Like, um.
Like 145, starting off with 145.
So if you do, like, this is 145, yep, so that's the first one. And then just go through them. 158, let's do that one first, do that one last. So you have, you know, maybe. Just so that way as we're flipping through the books. I don't, I don't know if you wanna announce the number because I don't know if the FinCom is aware of all the different budgets you work on. So you might want to just say this is budget one, you know, section 145.
Okay.
So I think we have a weapon altogether.
Yeah, 145, the treasure. But, but you know what I mean? Just so that. This is my first time doing this.
Okay.
And I just came on in like September, so.
All right.
Thank God for Kim and Deb because they helped me a lot, so. So on the 145, um, per my contract, contract, it's 76,500. I don't know if you want me to list each individual, well.
I mean.
I'm not sure. I think I'll list anything that changed. Changed, okay.
Yeah.
So we changed, um, we had an assistant, um. So, we changed, um, we had assistant, um, we had assistant treasurer collector, now, we have assistant treasurer collector now, and then we um, upgraded, oh, she was, was she clerical, Isabel?
She's senior clerk.
So now she's payroll coordinator, um, so that went up a little bit, um, in salary. Um, that's, longevity went down because of me. Um, the stipend went down, because I had my treasurer than not my collector, so that went down.
Is that why meetings and training sometimes went off?
Yeah, we did, because um, we wanted to include all three of us, to do, you know, meetings and not just me, so we, we increased that.
So, I'm just gonna interrupt you, so one of the things that I think would be valuable for the employees of the town is to have training, right? So one of the things I did tell the employees when they were doing their budget, that if there's training that you feel like you need or want, please put it within your budget. So this represents um, additional training, because the other staff will be assistant tax collector, treasurer, and the payroll coordinator would like to do some training. So I asked Patty to put it in the budget, so, and you'll see that pretty consistently in all the budgets, if there was extra training that employees hadn't been able to get in the past, I asked them to fund it. Um, one of the things is for employee retention, right, I think it goes a long way with employees, if they feel like they can further themselves, and, and so that was my goal in some of that, just, just so you have the preface of that, you're gonna see some of that, because I asked for that. Sorry Patty.
And, thank you.
And we put six hundred dollars into the other purchase services, town treasurer, um, that fully, that was for the cafeteria.
Yes.
So we wanna initiate a cafeteria plan that we don't have right now, so we're looking into that, um, so we put that in the budget, so if we do decide to go with that. So the state travel, that went up too, um, in August is Amherst that I go to school for, so if the assistant is interested in going, um, or the payroll coordinator, we put that money in there, so they'd be able to go also.
Which, what, which one are you talking about?
Call it the six hundred?
Yeah, you can just do one from zero to six hundred.
Yeah, the town treasurer, other purchase services. We put six hundred on that, so if we're gonna do the cafeteria plan, we'd have money in there to set, set it up in July.
And they charge like a monthly fee to operate it and manage it, it's fifty dollars a month, so that's six hundred dollars, we cover it, and again, that's one of the things I also ask, because I think it's also a good thing to offer the employees, and again, for retention purposes. Um, cafeteria plan is, is uh, helpful, and also, I was looking forward to that in order to have tax-free dollars to be put away in cafeteria for s- medical bills and spending, because at some point, I think our medical health insurance plan, which is extremely, is really good, with very, very low deductibles, at some point, we're gonna have to raise those deductibles for um, cost reasons, and that this is a way for us to say to the employees, but you can put these dollars away tax-free, to use towards these little bit higher deductibles, and it makes more sense for the town, so um, all that has to be bargained with the unions, so I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but I'm trying to look forward to try to prepare for those types of things. And again, I think it's a good, good thing to offer our employees that many, many other places offer, and it's just a minimal cost to the town, the employees will be putting their own money in the, in the actual cafeteria plan.
So tax title, one thing we did increase was the um, tax title.
It's number one fifty-eight.
I was gonna say, did you jump, did you jump budgets?
So Kim had written a sheet for me, um, so the treasurer, that, the previous treasurer, she was um, spending above the budget in amount of fifteen thousand five hundred for the past three fiscal years. So, Kim had helped me with this, um, the deficit has been raised on the tax recap for each year, of, although this is allowable, it would be better to properly budget for these costs, to increase to twenty-five thousand. Um, it's more of a realistic figure to address the cost related to the tax title charges. So we did, that was probably my, probably my biggest increase was that.
Mm-hmm.
That was probably it.
So we're twelve, yeah, twelve thousand twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see legal fees getting smaller or better.
Yeah, yeah, right. Seven-ten is the next budget.
Okay, so moving on, we're good with?
Yeah, seven-ten. Then eight forty? Is seven, right? Oh, seven-ten.
Yeah, I just did that right.
So that was, that's it about the same. So seven-ten is retirement of debts.
Yeah, just half ten thousand on the principal for the elementary school, and that's just based on the assisting administration schedule for the debt service.
And then you're gonna go to seven fifty-one? Seven fifty-one? That's the left decrease also, right? Yeah, so that, that decreased, so the fiscal five, because we have eight forty. Seven fifty-two is zero. Seven fifty-two is zero. And then eight forty is serpent. So that went up, um, eight forty, that went up a little.
On that one.
And that's just an assessment that comes from serpent?
Nine eleven, um, retirement. And that didn't go up, that went up a little too.
And is that just another?
Three and a thousand.
Propagation.
Propagation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's based on the assessment from Bristol County Retirement.
Yeah.
Um, and we do, do the, uh, pay the full amount on July one, so we do have a bit of savings, you'll see from the chart that if we spread it into a semi-annual payment, we'd be paying one million three sixty-four, so. We do save money by paying it all at the, all up front.
Great. Question?
We save money, we save money by paying the assessment um, upfront on July one, as opposed to using a semi-annual payment, so we um, we would pay one million three hundred and sixty-four thousand if we break it into two payments. So we are actually saving a bit of money by paying it all at once.
Okay. Okay. That was nine eleven, right?
Yep.
Thirteen?
Nine thirteen. That's the same, kind of similar, that's, we've got the same.
Nine fifteen is on the corner?
Yeah, thirteen on the corner.
Yes.
Sixteen.
Yep. So then nine fourteen is the next one? Nine fourteen is health insurance, so that is gonna be an increase, um, two point seven six increase, so that went up, the twenty-three. And then the health insurance, this one was, Nick, can you help me with this one, the twenty-three will owe for twenty-twenty, the ten thousand?
Right, so as part of the Affordable Care Act, um, there is a provision from the IRS for employer shared responsibility, so if folks go through the connector program, they, and they don't take advantage of our insurance, if they're eligible, um, some of that cost gets charged back to the town as the IRS works through that, so um, last ye- in fiscal twenty-one, we were assessed twelve thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, we have not received an assessment, um, which was for tax year twenty-eighteen, so you can see that there's a lag in them figuring out what these assessments are, and um, again, with um, I think the impact of COVID, it's still possible that it would be delayed, um, but ultimately, there will be some type of cost that we do, so best guess was ten thousand. Kind of as a placeholder to say, yes, we know we owe something, but we don't know what it is, it's calculated by the IRS.
Okay, makes sense to me.
And then stipends, um, I went up four thousand, only didn't know who was gonna be coming on for stipends for the following year, um, just so that's in there, and I know we had talked about maybe increasing the stipend. So I kinda just put money in there, if, you know, so it's available, we do have more people coming on. Life insurance, that's not changing, that's gonna stay the same. And that one's nine fifteen. Now, Medicare, nine sixteen, um, we went up two thousand for that. I'm not really sure why I went to thousand for that, I forget.
Cause it's based on a percentage of payroll and overall is going up.
Going up, okay.
Based on collective bargaining agreements.
Alright, I think that's all here, any other questions? Alright, thank you Patty, appreciate it. Okay, next, building and maintenance, on the hot seat.
Why don't I read out his budget numbers, so you know what, what, um, what things he'll be going to? I'll do this for the next meeting for sure, I apologize for not doing it, it's where, he has sections two forty-one, two forty-two, two forty-three, two forty-five, and one ninety-two.
One what, one ninety?
One ninety-two. It'll help you guys follow along, and you might wanna do them in that order, Jeff, can you do them in that order?
Uh, this is the order, state one more time.
I'll show you, two, way on the top here, two forty-one, one ninety-two will be the last, okay?
Alright, what I did was, I did the. Two forty-one, two forty-one, that's the first one.
Yeah, let's do that one, and then right through the sixth session, and one ninety-two will actually be last, unless you, if you wanna start with one ninety-two, just tell them what.
Okay. Two forty-one. Okay, two forty-one, um, salary, building commissioner, um, I had, I put an increase on that, um, I would like to get comparable pay with surrounding towns. I have done a poll, and they range, you know, some of the, the lower ones are because they're only building commissioners opposed to building and maintenance, uh, facility manager. And the ones of that, I didn't go as high as what they, I tried to keep in the middle, near the, near the low end of it, um, just because of the, the increase um, on that, I had, there, there's a uh, on this one, I, I figured out on a nine thousand, just under nine thousand for an increase for that, um, for the facilities and building commissioner. Doing a poll around, they range from forty to, to fifty dollars an hour, uh, this comes down to forty-two dollars an hour, which is hourly, it's, it's a four dollar, four and change, um, increase from what I'm doing now.
Joe, I have a question on this, would, would you, I see, I, I understand that, you know, it's a unique situation, cause it's maintenance, building pitch and maintenance, would you be interested, so we don't have such a jump in the year, yearly salary, salary, and to set us up for the future, if we ever pull the maintenance part away from it?
Yeah.
Having it as two different line items, where maintenance gets a stipend, you get a stipend for the maintenance part, and then, you know, a, a, a smaller salary increase?
Yeah.
For the actual building commissioner part, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
It kinda gets you to the same place, or somewhere close?
Yeah.
But then we don't have, like, you know, I, I, I just want, I don't wanna set the bar too high for the future, right?
Right, right, no, I, I, I get you on that, um, you know, after sitting down with Debbie, going through everything, I mean, there were a lot of things that I actually reduced. Once we get to the, um, electrical and, and plumbing, the last four, uh, three years that I've been doing it, you know, they've never hit that, that fee that, uh, the, the budget that they've, uh, reset. So I happen to reduce in that, I have more of a, um, view on the whole, uh, amount of what's going on, um, but I do have to take into consideration that, uh, with the pandemic, inspections just almost doubled. Because of that, but what we still had in there did cover them, um, it actually covered a little extra too, you know, I was able to break them down a little more, keep it, keep it a little more tighter. Basically what I'm trying to do, uh, and, and keep everybody within, um, the ballpark with, with everything else.
Okay.
And you, uh, the number of hours you're spending as the building commissioner?
Yeah.
And the number of hours you're spending as the maintenance coordinator, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I.
Well, it, it's, I mean, it's facilities manager, which I take care of this bill at, every building.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is that, is that considered the overtime as far as the number of hours, I mean, you're spending X number of hours as the building, uh, building inspector, building commissioner?
Right.
And then also the maintenance person?
Right, the.
I mean, you, can you do that in the same amount of hours that you're doing the building?
I have been, um, a lot of times I'll, you know, today, there were three, three issues that came in, um, you know, one was, was the roof of the highway barn, one, one section ripped off. You know, so now I had to make phone calls on that, that there took half hour of my time, um, there are some smaller things I have been working on, um, that I can send my maintenance person over to check, he'll report back to me. So it's, it does take time during the day, but I am able to do my, my inspections, and, and if it's a situation that it's taking a little more, I will call in my alternate to do the inspections to free up my time too. So it, it's, I'm, I'm balancing it right now.
An assistant building commissioner?
We have an alternate, so if I'm on vacation, he'll come in, uh, he only comes in, it, it's not really, yes, it, it, it's, it's called an alternate, an assistant would be working with, in the, yeah, full-time or part-time. Yeah. Um, and, but it is a situation where I have called him in, uh, depending on the, the load that I've had, and had him do the inspections to free me up, because I mean, the inspections itself could be uh, two to three hours a day. It's not every day that I have that, but it, you know, I'm.
And he's paid per diem?
What's that?
He's paid per diem?
Yeah, thirty-five dollars a, an inspection. And that's, that's the same as the electrical, plumbing, and gas.
True.
Okay.
So Jeff, but I think Trevor did bring up a valuable point about thinking about separating the two elements, how you go about doing that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's almost like, I don't know, I have to think about how that works out, but, you know, cause you're really meeting the building of all the other departments, like, I wonder how that, you know, budget should work, but yeah, I think you're splitting it out, and then if we ever, you know, if we have a lot more buildings, and we need, you know, more staff to do that, it can be its own line item.
Right.
Right?
I mean, wouldn't it make more sense to have a, and not so much an assistant, but someone to do the inspections, to take all of that maintenance inspection, the maintenance part of it, right out of, have a part-time person?
Yeah, and we do have someone who does maintenance right now, he's.
Yeah, we have a maintenance person.
I understand that, I mean, I'm talking about, you know, and you can use him in, in lieu of, uh, an inspector. I mean, obviously you have to be trained to do inspections.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Be a certified, uh, building official.
Right.
So have that person, the person, you know, meetings, be both, kinda like Jeff is.
Yeah, well, again, but I'm telling you, it, it doesn't actually take you out of the office, but it separates.
Yep, yep, I see what you're saying. Something to think about.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if, I mean, so would you be willing to split that, Jeff, I think that's what this is, I don't know.
Yes, I would be.
Cause it might be beneficial to get a two percent increase on the salary that you have, and then a stipend for the maintenance.
Yeah.
You'd be willing to?
It makes it, instead of, you know, it, well, in the past, we've tried to set a precedent of a two and a half percent increase, or so. When you look at the bigger increases, a one-year bigger increase, you know, that, that, it has to be extremely good reason for that.
I get that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, this, this is within the last three and a half years, my first section, uh, first year, when I was hired, I asked about more money, and they said they couldn't do it because it wasn't in the budget, and I never got any increase. I've been certified as a building commissioner at that time, opposed to conditional, um, and I still never got a, a step increase. So, um, it's almost to the point that it's kinda melting down, you know, it's just...
I'm not saying it shouldn't be increased.
Trying to get a reasonable pay from all the other commissioners around, they range from forty to fifty dollars. I think what I asked for there was forty-two. You know, if it's something that we can separate, then, you know, go with a two dollar raise with a, with a st- uh, stipend.
So, two percent increase would put you at seven two eight two eight, seventy-two thousand eight twenty-eight. And if you had a, a, a four or a five thousand dollar stipend, put you at seventy-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah.
For more than a seven thousand dollar raise, I don't know, what, 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 what you think is reasonable, what, what are your, what are your thoughts? And that puts you over the forty dollar.
That, that would work.
That's a, yeah, that's a, it's a good raise.
That isn't gonna...
And I think it's fair, I think it's fair, I think that's something we can, I can sell and, you know, feel good about, you know, I've been calling, I can't speak for you guys, but, yeah, so...
Are those the, the numbers, or are you going to build numbers? That has to come from Jeff, are, are you willing to, um, change your numbers to that?
Yes, I would, I would change my numbers to that.
So that would be, so then, Debbie wanted to...
Any two percent?
Two percent will put him at seventy-two eight two eight, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, and then a stipend of five thousand dollars.
That's what I have for that.
Was it just stipend is five thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you, I mean, this is coming from you, so is that okay? I put you at seventy-seven thousand eight twenty-eight.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be, I'd be okay with that.
That's a six thousand dollar increase over here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
A six thousand dollar raise.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And Kim, where would we put the stipend, in this budget, or in maintenance and facilities?
Um, well, if you think about it, it probably should go within the facilities budget.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Because it may not be the same person at some point.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, we should, we should put the stipend over there, and where he's doing both, it should, it should work that way.
That makes sense, and then, now, is there any kind of contract issue here, you need to worry about?
He doesn't have a contract.
Oh, you have the, you're, yeah, okay, that's right, alright, just making sure. Alright, good.
I'm good with that one.
So that was the first one. We got, we got the first line of the first, of the first budget.
Alright, going down the list, alright, there, there was an increase, uh, the third item down, the second item, zero dollars. Third one, it was forty-six, five twenty-five, and I boosted that up, um, because the increased two percent raise for, uh, the clerk. My clerk, building clerk. So, and that's what they, that's what that comes out to be, um, with her two percent raise.
Is, is she full-time?
She is full-time, I'm glad she is full-time, that's...
Your hands full, yeah.
Yeah. The fourth one, it, it was fifteen hundred, I bumped it down to a thousand. We haven't really hit that range, I don't, I tried to take it down, but I don't wanna hit it so low that all of a sudden we're, we're in a hole. Fifth one, zero, uh, again, there's another one, it was seventy, um, seven hundred and fifty bucks, I went down to six seventy-five. That was longevity, uh, that is the longevity for the clerk. At this point, I'm not, I haven't qualified for that. Uniform allowance, five hundred, I kept that the same, uh, the educational is stipend, um. Even though they've gone up in price, it was thirty dollars a, a meeting, now it's forty-five, but looking through that thing with time and everything, I probably only make half of them anyway, so it stayed, it would, um, bump up to the twelve, twelve seventy.
Um, Jeff, on that one, um, this is really, um, supposed to be for, um, an education incentive stipend that would be paid to the commissioner. Um, it's not for the trainings that you attend, the trainings are part of your second page, third item down, which is building meetings and training seminars. So that's where your fees that are paid to, for you to go to those, um, courses.
Yeah.
Come out of, so, um, I honestly think that's twelve seventy needs to come out.
Yeah, so I can knock that down to five fifty, because there is a course that I most likely take for building commissioners.
Okay, but again, nothing should be here, because you're not receiving an incentive stipend, it should be part of the expense budget, not the personnel piece.
Okay.
So you're saying it should be zero?
It should be zero.
I think this one should be zero, because there's no provision right now in the bylaw to pay any type of incentive. Um, and as you can see, it's never been paid out in the past, um, so it should really be zero, and if you feel that you need, um, to increase the meetings and trainings to fifteen hundred from the thousand, so that you could take that additional course, that's where you would put that.
That's the next page you'd do it.
Yeah, I'm on that right now, um, yeah, we're on page, what, sixty-six? You guys labeled with that?
Yeah.
So we're gonna zero out the twelve seventy, right?
On six, on page sixty-five.
Yeah.
To increase the thousand to fifteen hundred.
To fifteen, or does it need to up to the twelve seven? Page sixty-six, the third line down, building meetings and training seminars, it's a thousand dollars right now, is that sufficient, or you need to go up on that?
That, I'd like to go, go to fifteen hundred, um, just because that, um, that one course to... The certification on, on different things for, um... HVAC, the, the, they, they offer different certifications for, for that, the courses, so I hate to miss out on that, um, for all the structural certifications and so on, so... It's something that, years before, I used to pay for that myself, um, you know, being in part-time, you know, they didn't cover it and so on, not here, other towns, but... Seven hundred stayed the same, I went up on two, three, four, the fifth one, um, was a painting. Everybody knows what the town hall...
Printing.
Oh, Jesus.
That's the same, right?
Alright, alright, the printing, um, that has gone up, I've noticed that with the, with us printing our, um, forms for when I do an inspection, handing those out. And what I wanna do is, um, I gotta sit down with Debbie and all the other inspectors, and I wanna give them, so they leave something at a house that they can read, and then I get the copy, so I know every time they've done an inspection. Right now, it's kinda tough, you know, I don't know half the time till two months later, you know, when they submit everything all at once. So, I'm trying to get a little hold on that, and the way to do that is, is I'll have to be printing out those forms, um, you know, it's a carbon copy that they make. And right now, I, I have it just for myself, um, and, you know, we, I use that for some of the, like, the finals, you know, I use the fire department, they sign on that as well, I have their name on it. Alright. So, it, it's more of a tool for the, for the job itself, I mean, I think it's a crucial, crucial item. Uh, I went up thirty dollars on the postage. I gotta, I'm just estimating, because the increase of postage, you know, for this coming year, you don't know what it's gonna end up doing.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't think thirty dollars is...
No, I don't think, I don't think we need to talk about it.
Might not be there, uh, as much, but, um...
We'll, we'll let, we'll let it go, I think. It was a self-adhesion, adhesive?
Okay, we jumped up a thousand dollars on the building office supplies. Uh, the building department is responsible for all the papers in that hallway copier, we have to supply all that. We supply on that new, uh, scanner, which is one roll. One roll is, is almost sixty dollars for a roll, and we've gone through five rolls already, so... And not many people are using it right now, but once they start getting into, they, they're gonna start reducing it, reducing the size and everything, because we just don't have the space. Uh, I don't know if anybody's ever come into the, looked into the building department, you see our files, and it's, we're almost maxed out with space. So, it's, you know, trying to scan things in would be a, a crucial item.
It does, so, since you have a lot of items here, we wanna get through these, do you, how about we look through, is, if anyone's any questions on any changes, and then we can move on?
You wanna just do, like, the increases?
Yeah, I mean, how about increases that are, like, bigger than, like, you know, ten percent or so? I think otherwise, you know, we're not gonna be down here on postage.
I think we'll all start with this.
This one, I just, uh, property maintenance, one ninety-two.
One ninety-two has a lot, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so we'll move on to two forty-two, we...
Two forty-two is the, um, the gas inspector. I reduced that because he's never hit that amount, so I reduced it to, um, five thousand, saying that he's gonna, you know, with the increases of inspections, but, um, if you look at the previous years, we'd never really touch six thousand. So, um, electrical, uh, I'm sorry, the plumbing, um, same thing with that.
Perfect, we're letting you reduce numbers here.
And the electrical is two people, um, two guys, one, one for Asona and one for East Freetown, and I pretty much looking at the previous years, basically with a little increase of, um, extra inspections. So that takes care of that section.
One ninety-two is a big one.
Going to page thirty-five. Now, one ninety-two. The first item is the custodian maintenance person, um, we've... I, I have talked about increasing him to a forty-hour, now was that, um, through one of the selectmen's meetings too, that we agreed to put a forty, wasn't?
I'm thinking, um...
I think it was just my, my, and you, you and I conversations in terms of...
We might've talked about it, I don't know if it was...
Yeah, I don't think so.
I don't remember it.
No, I, I, I mean, there's a lot that this guy does in a day, and sometimes it's a struggle, because he's, he puts flags up and down, thirteen different flags, right? I mean, he, he gets the mail every day, he fixes, he cleans all the buildings, and then whenever there's a project, a leaky sink, or a broken toilet, or this, he runs and does all that.
Or the roof of this falling off town hall.
Yeah, well, that...
And he travels all around the town, so there's a lot of time that...
Well, that, that too is, to increase it to forty, there's times where he doesn't have enough time, when people start coming into the town hall to do the floors. So if he comes in an hour earlier, I really do need him to go to four o'clock, cause everybody else, they may have an issue. So, to go from seven o'clock, Monday through Thursday, and keep everything else the same for the end, gives him the forty hours, he's at thirty-six now. And it would definitely benefit, um, that department.
That makes sense to me, fine, any questions on that?
I mean, ideally, I'd like to have an extra person, but...
I did have a question to the third one down, um, which is the same person, um, you're budgeting six hundred dollars?
Yeah.
For him to come in early for shoveling or emergency?
That is to come in on a Saturday or a Sunday for overtime for shoveling the police department, this is the biggest issue that we have.
So this isn't to come in early on a regular day?
No, not this, not this.
Okay, cause that's not always explained.
This is, this is, so, all of a sudden, I gotta call him Thursday evening to come and shovel the, the police station. This is the only building he's gonna be doing that for, um, as it was, we, we tried to get him in a number of times for overtime, um, but it ju, it, it just wasn't enough for what we figured from the previous year, it, it, it didn't cover it. So, I, I, I felt that at this price would cover that, him coming in, um, again, when he comes in, he, he's gonna have to put up four hours, because if it's snowing all night, this is the one spot that, the way the chief said to me, if a pregnant lady comes in, she slips and falls, you know, it doesn't look good.
So this, this technically should say weekends, not just coming early.
Well, the coming in early is his normal, it would be his normal hours, and those four extra hours, I'm talking about the first item.
No, 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 I'm on the third.
Alright, you're on the third.
We've, we've passed that first one.
That would be an overtime for s- snowing, the snow shoveling.
Right, but it's only covering the weekends, not...
Well, if we cover anything beyond forty hours in a work week. Because overtime would have to be paid, so it could happen where, as Jeff said, you know, he might have to stay an hour late, um, to do something, if there's an emergency or whatever. So, it would cover any time beyond forty hours in a work week.
Alright, that makes sense. Uh, up and down, going to, well, there was a drop in the electricity, uh, we have more of a... A vision on what the, the bill would be, um, for a year, uh, we put it at sixty, last year, we were unsure, um, and we put it at sixty-eight, we're at sixty thousand. Electricity for the fire station, um, with the increase of electricity and everything, we bumped that up three thousand. Electricity, same thing with the, the highway barn, uh, same thing with the transfer station, the COA, um, the libraries. These were, these were tough ones, trying to figure out the electricity for, you know, with the increase, you don't, you don't know how much they're gonna be jumping, um, we tried to, to work with that as much as we can. Others are the, um, the park here, the, um, the boat ramp. With that, the, um, the ball fields, uh, over, not the ball fields, but, uh, Hathaway, Hathaway Park, that there, where they have the lights with the flags and, you know, stuff like that. So, that covered, um, all of those areas.
Alright, any, any particular questions, some of the, on these increases, guys, and I don't know, I'm gonna go through one of them.
I think just percentage-wise, they're a little different.
Yeah.
You know, like, you, you bumped up fire by thirty percent, but the other one, highway barns, a little bit more, thirty-six percent. So just like a percentage increase, it's kind of like for each, for the...
Right.
So do we expect different utilization? So do we expect different utilization?
It's, the way I, it, it's from basically what I've been paying, paying before, and, um, let's just hop up, but, well, let's go to the different, the... Transfer station, we have it, it was at sixty-seven, and to December of this year, it, it was, uh, twenty-three. So you still have another half a year to go, which is five, but now with the increase of electricity, we gotta kinda figure that out, because I, I just don't wanna run into a hole.
But Jeff, I think her point is, is just to make it an equal percentage across all departments, right? So if you're saying, I'm gonna go up ten percent in the fire department, you go up that ten, why not go up ten percent on the transfer station? Whatever the number is, I'm just throwing a number of ten percent out, but...
It's, number one, who's, I, I was in operation, they, they increased that, so that's gonna increase it as well, that makes sense. So it's kinda tough, there's, there's things that I didn't go up as much, the COA, um, I mean, you, you, you go down through the whole thing. The, the, um, the heating for the highway, um, is electric, uh, i- in some areas that they're starting to use to, to get the chill out. So, I gotta kinda think of the whole, the whole, you know, part of the whole, the whole scope of, of everything, what they're gonna be using. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Uh, police station, the heating, um, again, that's propane, propane is just starting to climb.
I tried to fill my tank, it was not fun.
No, I mean, and when you're, they're filling the tank and it's four thousand dollars to fill it, that twenty-five probably be pretty close to it.
Yep.
Um, yeah, just to give you guys an update, um, so for the police right now, through, um, the middle of April, we've already spent twenty-three thousand four hundred on heating, so clearly, um, things are going up. In terms of the fire stations, we're already at fourteen thousand, so, um, they have had maybe an inefficient boiler situation.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, we get a lock, so we're good.
I think your votes will probably do well.
Yeah, so I, I guess my only point is, based on where we currently are today, some of the percentages, um, it, it, as Jeff is trying to say, it's not necessarily a straight percentage for each...
Yeah, that makes sense, anything about it.
Because in, in electricity, some, it reflects heat, so the COA, they have a heat pump system, like, so, like, that's actually electricity and heat, so it's different. It's not just straight electricity for everybody, unfortunately, it's confusing.
Okay.
So based on what you're, you just said, you think it should go in more than twenty-five thousand for this building?
Six thousand, you said?
Let me shake that crystal.
Well, I'm just saying, you said we're at twenty-three thousand already, right, and change, so I almost wonder if he goes more than twenty-five thousand on that one.
Well, by next month, you know, it should be higher up, you don't need to.
Well, it's not the heat, now you have the eight, the electricity for the AC.
No, but this is the electricity, we're talking about the heating.
The heating for the police station.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, they're probably gonna be cost, I mean...
I, I, I kinda feel that twenty-five thousand would probably be okay, I mean, that's...
Oh, things get out of hand, you can always get money from a reserve fund.
Yeah, I'll try not to, but this is...
Well, no, I'm saying, that's why you have a reserve fund.
Right. Alright, uh, going down, um, town properties, uh, the service and grounds and maintenance, um... That there, again, this year, we've already spent ten thou- we're already old, we're, we're almost over, but this was back in December, that these numbers were already, so I kinda bumped it to cover that. Because we're gonna be, we're gonna be in the red this year for what we budgeted before, and...
What was the change from last year to this year before?
Um...
Forty-one, forty-one percent.
Trying to...
You're looking at doing a cleaning service, right?
Yeah, yeah, part of this is that, you know, um, the maintenance facility, uh, employee that we talked about raising the forty hours, part of the, the thing we talked about is possibly bringing in a cleaning contractor to clean, like, the toilets, the bathrooms, that, that kinda cleaning, to free him up to do bigger projects. Because he is a carpenter, he can do some of the work that needs to be done around town, and, and he doesn't necessarily...
Have you, I mean, my question, have you done it? I mean, it says cleaning here is a notation.
I guess your question is, we spent fourteen thousand already, right? Is that what you're saying, we spent fourteen thousand four hundred?
That, that was the cleaning for this police station, that's, that comes out of that. Um, this, this cleaning...
Whatever, what else does, does this entail? It says town property, R and M, service, buildings and grounds on wall, so it's the town hall, the police station, but what else?
The libraries?
No, just town hall.
Huh?
This line item is just for the town hall.
This line item?
Yes.
So that eighteen-five is just for the town hall?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, that, again, my question is, you went from ten-five to eighteen-five, what changed? The cleaning for the town?
The, what we've already spent this year, and we're not even done with the year, I mean, that, that was December, and we're already at that point. Cleaning materials, i- i- I mean, we, we pretty much had to get sanitizer stuff, we, we, we had to get, um, wipes, we had, you know, that...
I, I understand.
That increased the hand wash stuff, we had to change a lot of things out, and, and, you know, a, a tube with the hands, hand stuff is sixty bucks. You know, and we got several eight of them in, in the building, it, it kinda, it, it creeps up, I mean, that's... You know, I'm, again, I'm...
I'm surprised there weren't any grants for that, were there any grants, money, COVID?
Well, oddly enough, we did get a lot from the fire department, you know, we, we...
Thank you.
They were able to, you know, get us some, um, but we driving to, to stay above everyone.
So, but, so you've already made the expenditure for all of this stuff, so is it gonna continue, I guess that's my question?
Um, this would probably, I, I think it's gonna taper off, and, I mean, again, December at ten thousand, it, it's, I estimated it's gonna hit fifteen, sixteen thousand. But with everything that's going up this coming year, it's kinda hard to tell.
Yeah.
You know, three thousand dollars more to cover.
But my original question was, what has changed, and I think you've answered the question.
Yeah, the pandemic is, is the big thing, I mean, that's, you know, I, I thank God that the fire department was able to help out with a lot of that, um, stuff, and, but they can only get so much as well. And I have to find a company that actually did help us out, um, with that, so...
I mean, you were collusion with other towns as, as buying this stuff?
Um, the company that I, I deal with, they only deal with hospitals, they only give that supply stuff to hospitals, and I was able to get it from them. Um, you know, enough, I, I mean, I can't get a, a whole crap load, but I can keep ordering to, to keep my supply going, you know, without running out. And that was my, my main thing to do.
Okay.
Alright, next page, aim down on that one. Um, let's see, down, one, two, three, four, the fifth one, at ten-five, um, that went up, that's also the cleaning for the COA. The last, they've been getting a lot of cleaning, um, things from Stop and Shop, where they're now, not getting it now, you know, which I just recently found that out.
You're talking supplies?
Supplies, yeah.
So who performs the...
And, and the cleaning, now, part of this cleaning is the, having a person come in, and just the two hours of cleaning the COA. And part of the other one was the cleaning for the, um, town hall as well, the two hours there. Um, so we kinda calculated to, to cover that.
I'm not gonna argue about a decrease, but I'm interested that, um, all of these building and grounds is going up, pretty sizable amounts, but the police station got cut in half.
Why? For the cleaning?
Yeah.
Well, they have, they have a, a cleaning crew already in place, and it's nineteen hundred dollars a, a month that they're paying, which I gotta call them, because they, the clean person didn't show up today. So, or the last two days, so I gotta, I'll have to deal with that.
And where is that budgeted, is that budgeted under police, or does that show up somewhere else in building?
The cleaning is on the next page.
Yeah.
Other town property, other related, property-related services, police, thirty-four thousand, that's the cleaning service for this building.
Okay.
This is shoveling.
This is just shoveling?
Yeah.
Five thousand?
Five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was shoveling.
That is to get a company as well here to, um, I, I think, we kinda went out to try to get landscaping companies, somebody that would come out, and the prices that we'll get, and, um, was that. For them to come, if it's snowing here, now Tim can get over to the town hall, see, we weren't really concentrating on just here, but he's got the town hall and the library that's open, you know, he's still being pulled in. Um, he'll come here, open it up, and then sometimes the, the police will spread the salt melt on. Um, but he, I told him, just do one swipe, clean up that front, and then you can get to the other, other, um, town hall. If, you know, he'll come in three o'clock in the morning to, to make sure the buildings are opened up. You know, the, because to try to do all that, the library, the COA, the town hall, um, and to come in at seven o'clock, i- i- it's not gonna be done. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be a half hour just driving around to the different areas. Um, that, that, jumping back, that, that was that six hundred dollars for overtime stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and we're trying to get a, a crew here, a landscaping crew, just to do this as well. Um, if it's snowing, they're gonna be coming back, you know, during the course of the...
This, this shoveling stuff doesn't have, doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with plowing?
No, not at all, the town plows the, the parking lot.
That's what I figured, but I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, that's...
Before we see plowings.
Yeah, they, in the previous years, they had one guy that would shovel, but he, he'd do one walkway, and that's it, just that front step area. All they do now is, is, is plow.
Any other questions on any other changes?
I mean, looking at the fire station, they take care of their own, so we don't really have to touch that, thank you.
Do you have a thing, so, don't really question any other changes, do we have to go, as I look through, nothing seems crazy?
Where's the electricity for the police station?
Maybe getting here?
Yeah.
Yes, that went down from sixty-eight to sixty.
Because, yeah, they're just getting better, it's a new building, getting better and familiar with this, to project what it's gonna cost, right? That's what you mentioned?
Right, right, I mean, now we've had a couple of years of it, now I know a, a better pick on the whole thing, I, it just...
Probably go way down when we get to Solopan.
Yeah.
Would've been nice if, you know, spend a fourteen million dollars, and somebody said, hey, well, what's it gonna do, we should just, uh, kill the electricity a little bit.
Don't, don't disagree with you, do not, I don't disagree with you, I wasn't a part of that, unfortunately, but...
Any building in town, or any renovations in town should include that.
Alright, I'm on page forty-one, I jump to that. Anything else is pretty, pretty close to... Forty-one, one, two, three, fourth one, um... Communication bundle, that, the, that's the, um...
Cameras?
Cameras and, what's that, the wifi, they have the wifi there? The wifi, because of the cameras and everything, um, and cable for the computers. Alright, that, I think you're up to hook up, I think we're, we're good? Yeah, everything else is, is, it's right there, supplies went up a little for the fire department, they're getting messy every now and then, but...
Transfer station would be...
Transfer station...
You gave them a lot of stuff, so you're putting this going down, right?
Four down, eighteen hundred to three thousand.
That's because they, they just got new cameras, so now it's the, the running of, of the camera, I mean, the security.
Yeah. A monthly fee for the cameras that, so that we can look at the transfer station.
Is it same contract for the entire town, the same company that does it?
They're all Comcast, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Well...
We don't, I mean...
I was gonna, we don't have many cameras.
They don't have many cameras, I think transfer stations...
Transfer station, highway barn, and, um, COA.
There's no cameras here?
Yeah.
No, there is, here, here. But that, that's a part of, that was different than this, yeah.
Yeah, COA has one, and, and the town hall has one camera. It would've been nice that too, at least, but, cross that bridge later.
Alright, do we have any more questions?
So it's the same, this seems a problem with the, the, uh, the COA, went from four hundred to twenty-one, so that's the same problem?
Um, that there is, if you look in the previous ones, we've, we've pretty much always accept, exceeded it. Now you gotta look at, they've enclosed a lot of the times too, so I'm, I'm trying to cover that, now that, you know, we're getting back to normal, it, it's gonna start jumping.
Alright, alright, thank you, all set, Jeff, thank you very much.
That's it?
I think you're good, and nothing else seems crazy, fire, you're next. Come on the hot seat, chief.
Come on down.
Hi, Jeff.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you tomorrow. What?
I'll, I'll talk to you.
Yeah, we'll fix this, you want this?
Yeah.
We'll fix it too.
Okay, perfect.
Alright.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I got the seat making.
Thanks for softening on the brush.
So this is budget two-twenty and two-ninety-one.
Alright.
For those of you who don't know, we have Gary Sylvia, I'm the fire chief, this is deputy Harry Ashley. I asked him to repay this year's budget, because I'm gonna retire halfway through the next fiscal year.
No.
So he's...
I'll turn up, deputy chief, Ashley.
Okay.
I, I'll start off by saying this is, I've, I've spent a lot of time on this over the last eight months, because this is my first experience with it. I'm very thankful that I have this to lean on and ask questions, and even bounce stuff off, if they're, sort through this, this is a lot.
Yep.
Um, we have, on the fire department budget, the increase is eleven percent. Uh, the vast majority of that is contractual, there are several things in there that are not contractual, that are more maintenance and, um, repair-related. Uh, I'll go through the, the increases, the changes, I, I'm not sure how you, you want me to do this, there's, there's a lot here.
Yeah, just, I guess...
I can go through the big stuff that's not contractual, however you wanna do it, I...
I think, yeah, for me...
Actually, I just, I'd just like to know, how many, how many firefighters are there, in total?
There are thirteen career, counting the chief and myself. There are thirteen career, counting the chief and myself, and I believe we have eighteen on-call firefighters right now.
So thirteen full-time and?
Yes.
Eighteen part-time?
Yes.
So.
So that would be, all of that would come under firefighters' salaries and wages?
No.
No.
But salaries and wages are the, the full-time staff.
That's just the full-time?
That's the full-time staff, yes.
And the part-time comes under?
Uh, the, the part-time help will.
Salaries and wages?
Call wages. Fire common, salary wages.
Yeah.
That's callback.
Okay.
When the pager goes off.
Okay.
And there is a substitution line here also when they, when they work, because the call, the call people also do work shifts when we have vacation time, sick time, etc. So it'll come with that too.
Okay.
Alright, so how?
Would that be gross overtime?
Gross overtime is when the permanent personnel cover vacation, sick time, holidays, etc. So that's, that's, that's the overtime line.
Yeah. So in other words, when you, for every car accident out there, you dispatch a fire truck, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when that fire truck is dispatched, somebody who's on-call has to cover the station. Is that correct?
When we have a motor vehicle accident.
Yep.
We sound those tones, pagers go off.
Yeah.
On-call personnel is summoned in.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Also, any off-duty, full-time members get that same summons, get that same tone. So there are times that we don't get anybody, and one of the, myself, sometimes it's the chief, sometimes it's the, the fire inspector. We go and grab the engine. The, the engine's critical to have there to block traffic.
Yeah, someone's gotta be there.
We, we see, we see that almost daily, right? That people are getting killed on highways in a car accident. So we pack the fire truck there. More to block the, the scene than anything, but, um, so generally, yes, motor vehicle accidents, we're, we're calling the people to bring the fire truck. Uh, but also, if it's nights or weekends, we need to get the second ambulance.
Let me ask you a question. What was your two accidents?
There's just two accidents? We take them as they come in. We, we have that, as soon as, as soon as the first call is taken care of, the second ambulance gets stabbed and covered if it's, if it's a callback situation.
So there's, there's, we have two ambulances, right?
Correct.
So those two, if those two are out, what will be the next step? We call?
We get a mutilate, we get mutilate ambulance, and based on the location is, it's all set up here.
Yeah.
If it's closer to Berkeley, Berkeley's called. If it's closer to Far River, Far River's called. Lakeville, in that way, the, it's all, that's all pre-planned on account.
Okay. So actually, the total wages would be a combination of all of those, part-time, full-time, all of that, that would be considered wages? All of them?
Yes.
So you've got to separate it. Three, four, four lineups?
Yes. Alright, Mr. Chairman, what?
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think we need to go through every single one of these. If there's any questions on any of them, I mean, contractual stuff, the, the rest of the equipment, I understand that, it needs to be done, right? I don't have any particular questions. I'm not sure if anyone else does.
Nothing jumped out?
Alright. Give it a minute.
Actually, uh, on page sixty, number three, I think, six-five, he came in, six, eight, six, sick buyback?
Yes.
That's worth twenty-seven thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
What is that for?
That is the fire chief's sick time buyback when he retires.
Really?
Yes.
Even that's sick?
No, he hasn't been sick. Never been sick.
He's the owner of good health.
Reward for not taking sick time, so.
You get a cold once in a while?
Forty-plus years.
That's dedication.
Tell the world stuff needs to go away.
And that's contractual too, right?
Yes.
Contractual, so there's other ways to do that.
Alright. No questions from the board?
I'm just curious about the medical director.
Okay, we're required by the state, it's part of our ambulance license, we have to have a physician as the department's, as our EMS medical director. So our doctor's actually, he works, he's in emergency room doctor.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I read the best.
So he signs our food and drug licenses, and he actually, we, every single medical run we do is critiqued in-house. It's critiqued by the chief or I with a, with a form that we fill out. And then every single medical run we do, the doctor reads and critiques to make sure that our quality assurance is where it needs to be and it covers us, but keeps us, keeps us on track and.
It's money well spent.
So they make sure, and it's, and there's a, there is a small increase there for him. It seems like, um, the trend with some of the other fire chiefs that I've spoken through, he hasn't had an increase in a while, but that seems to be that, that increase is the go and rate for what medical directors are getting paid.
Oh, yeah.
But this fire repairs and maintenance equipment, that doesn't have anything to do with the ambulances, right? What is that, that's just the general?
That's all the vehicles.
Fire hoses and?
No, it's all the vehicles.
Oh, what?
Fire repairs, maintenance, equipment, for equipment or for vehicles? Bottom of page sixty?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the last item on page sixty.
Okay, that's, that's, um, no, that's not vehicles.
Sixty-one, you go vehicles.
Right, that's not vehicles. We, that, that's to maintain our breathing apparatus. We have to, we have to be tested every annually. The, the bottles on the breathing apparatus have to go out and be hydrotested. Uh, that helps the, or that pays for the calibration. We have a compressor to compress the breathing air that goes in there. That has to be calibrated quarterly. We have a contract for that. So that, that pays for that. It also pays for our fit test. We have to have the mass fit test every year annually, so that's what, that's what that's for. That's not, that's not vehicles.
Okay. Well, the next item is vehicles. That went from eighty-five hundred to fifteen thousand.
Okay. We have, uh, the town mechanic is doing light maintenance. Modern, all of our, all of our vehicles now have computers in them. Everything's electronically controlled. They're, the, the technology that's in them now is far beyond the capacity and, and it's not really within his realm of, of making repairs and, and the routine maintenance of it. So what we've done is I've got estimates to send each fire truck, the lodge stuff, the pumpers, the ladder truck, to a certified emergency repair facility that's gonna do an annual pump service on the vehicles with pumps. The ladder truck's gonna do an annual ladder service. Um, and the complete chassis maintenance, bumper to bumper, on each vehicle annually. And the ambulances, I've budgeted to send the primary ambulance that never stops four times a year. That's fuel filters, oil filters, complete chassis lubrication, check the brakes, all that. Um, so I'm gonna send a primary ambulance four times a year, and I'm gonna send a secondary ambulance three times a year. And then we'll continue to send the pickup trucks and the, and the chief's car and whatnot to the town.
Yeah, and the, you have an integral as far as miles driven for the vehicles? In other words, you know, how many miles do you put on a, a fire truck a year approximately?
That depends on which fire truck. The, the engine that's stationed at Station Three probably does six to ten thousand miles a year. The, the, the truck that's in a sonnet probably only does three.
Yeah.
Um, so it, so it all depends on, on the vehicle, but they, they should be, the pumps need to be serviced annually anyway.
Yeah.
And it's, it's just a good practice to, to change all the fluids and, and have a, have a fresh eye annually.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just wondering about the manufacturer's recommended maintenance schedule. So you're following the, the maintenance schedule from the manufacturer?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, it's an annual, annual service plan.
Anything else?
No. I think we can move on to.
Harry, I think you did it.
You did it.
Did it?
You survived.
Alright, I have emergency management, right?
Yeah.
Two ninety, is that two ninety-one civils?
Which is.
Civil defense, is that the same thing?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay.
Rowan, page what?
It's, uh, two ninety-one is the tab number. I'm not sure if you have that.
That would, that pretty much stayed the same.
Yeah, that's, that's the same except for two percent salary increase for the department.
Alright. Good.
Any questions on that?
Alright, that was painless.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we'll free time then.
Harry, I'm here to take some vacation time coming up.
Why don't you do it?
Do I need to move or I can work from here?
Alright, so admin, so I wanna just read off your, uh.
Alright, let me read you the numbers I'll be going through.
What do we have?
Administration.
Administration.
What numbers?
Oh, yeah, we're, she's gonna list off all the numbers.
I'm gonna read it right now. Are you ready?
There's a lot of them.
Oh, okay.
One twenty-two, one twenty-five, one fifty-one, one fifty-five, one ninety-three, one ninety-five, nine twelve, nine forty-five, nine sixty-six. And then I'll, I'll look at nine thirty-one and nine thirty-two.
I've lost it last year, but we'll, we'll figure it out. Don't worry.
So one twenty-two is the selectman's budget.
Always.
Alright, one twenty-two.
I pretty much level funded the selectman's budget. Um, the minor increase I have was the cell phones, just because based on the monthly fee of the cell phones, I have, um, uh, two selectmen with the town cell phones. The monthly fee, I just calculated it increased by seventy-two dollars. The only other fee that I increased was the postage. I increased it by fifty dollars for the year, just again based on stamps going up. So that one's almost level funded. Any questions with the selectman's budget?
No.
The next budget is one twenty-five, the administrator's budget, that's my office there. So the biggest probably, let me just look at the increase here. The increase is almost a thirty thousand. Most of that is, you're gonna see the town administrator. As you know, I'm interim, so in order to get a qualified candidate in the position, the go-in salary I would say is around a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and I wanted to make sure that that was funded, depending on what, what we do. Um, so that was a fifteen thousand dollar increase. Um, the executive assistant salary, uh, it looks like a decrease, but it isn't. That's contractual, uh, as well as the, uh, admin clerical, it's a contractual increase. So those are, are by contract. Um, what else has I changed? I think that one of the biggest change I, I made was, um, town admin professional and technical consulting. It was budget, last year's budget was twenty thousand. I increased it to thirty-five thousand for a couple of reasons. One, we have some big, uh, big positions retiring this year, fire chief, police chief. If the selectmen were to hire a firm to replace the police chief, they would need funds to do that. Also, um, anytime we go for grants, sometimes we need to spend money on engineering, a few thousand dollars to get preliminary plans to go for the grants. And I, I, I wanted to have some money to do that. So I did increase that. The average cost to go out and hire, uh, head personnel is probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars. So that's a fifteen thousand dollar increase there. Other than that, uh, town admin meetings and trainings, I reduced that, just, uh, I'm not inclined to do a lot of that, and I don't know about the next person, but I think fifteen hundred should be sufficient. The cell phone cost went up a little bit. Um, same thing, in-state travel, there's not a lot of that, so a lot of things are Zoom now, so there's not as much travel. I just reduced it a little bit. So that's that budget. Do we have any questions? Okay, next budget, one fifty-one is our legal budget. That's for town council, for the town. I level funded that, I believe. Let's take a look. I did, I level funded that at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And again, that's one of those you never quite know. Um, but we consistently spend a good amount of money on town council based on, you know, ongoing cases and, uh, always looking for advice and stuff with that. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Next budget, one fifty-five is our computer budget really. It's, uh, management information systems. Um, this budget went up by about fifteen thousand. Uh, we've had to go in for a reserve fund transfer for this budget. This covers our, a, a lot, all of our subscriptions to the phone system and different things. It covers any replacement equipment or new equipment that we need to buy for any town employees or new employees or replacement equipment. I know that the highway department needs a couple of new computers, so I, I up the IT replacement equipment to cover that cost of that. The, the biggest number also, the, um, IT professional and tech was twelve thousand. We have already expended twelve thousand this current year. Um, so I increased that to twenty thousand. That's one of those numbers we never know. When our computers go down, we have to call the, the tech to come and work on them or work remotely. He has indicated, uh, this has to go off procurement, but he has indicated that he's gonna go up on his price hourly. And I think even when we go out to procurement, we're gonna find that he's still the cheapest even at a higher rate. So we needed more money in that. But there's, there's a lot of subscriptions that go into this, our backup, cloud backup fees, um, the telephone systems, uh, you know, the, the civic, uh, town civic, where we have the webpage, there's subscription fees for that. That's all in there, and that may even be a little shy, but that's, that's pretty level funded from the current year and what we expand.
That includes VEDAR as well, which supports my office, the collector treasurer's office, the assessor's office, so that's a complete package, which is easily twenty.
Yeah.
So, between seventeen and twenty a year, so.
Any questions on that?
Just one quick question. It seems like there was a lot of repeat things from when you came for the reserve transfer, reserve fund transfer. When, when you came and asked for that, that was to cover last year's, but it's a yearly thing? So like that eight thousand, um, what was it? Uh, eight thousand for professional services, that was to cover last year, but now you're also increasing it for next year?
Right.
Okay.
Right, so that we don't run into the same shortfall.
Okay. It was just that repeat. I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, of course. Um, any other questions? Next budget is one ninety-three, which is property insurance. This is a, I updated this. So this is a, I have updated four twenty, but I don't know if this is the updated amounts. I have, um, this is, there's the estimate right behind it that will give you the amount, estimated amounts. So, you, you just got it, you should've gotten an updated one tonight, so it's a budgeted one oh six, seven thirty, yeah. So that's pretty much the property estimate. You'll see I attached it behind it and there's credits, so you'll see the property at one eleven, but there's credits down below that brings it down a little bit. So that one's based on the, you know, the quote from the, the Maya. Any questions on that?
Yeah, this town insurance automobile. Is that, that doesn't, is that like for the town hall vehicles or is it?
Every vehicle for the town.
Say again?
Every vehicle for the town, all departments. Fire trucks, police cars, a, anything owned by the town, any vehicle, trailers.
Construction equipment.
I don't think that would be considered a vehicle if it doesn't have a plate, so.
Inland marine is usually your machinery, your equipment, your construction equipment.
Well, you got a plate on it.
Well, not everything has plates on it.
Well, in order to get it on the road, it's gotta have either a, it's gotta have either a registration plate or a call app.
Then it would be, I would believe that would be under your automobile. It might be under inland.
I'm just curious, you know, the amount of, of, the amount of cars and equipment. It covers all, police cars?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah.
One ninety-five, is this the town report? One ninety-five, is this the town report, we, um, that's printing the town annual report, that's level funded. One ninety-five, and then nine twelve is Walkman's font. That just went up a little bit, um, just based on our expected increase. And I wanna say that came in, okay, ninety-one, six fifty, any questions on that?
Nope.
Nine forty-five liability, insurance, again, we got the quotes, which came in a little bit lower than, um, than what I had in, originally anticipated. So those numbers are based on that quote from Maya at sixty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, slightly higher than last year's. Any questions on that?
No.
Alright.
Nine sixty-six is OPEB, and this is the unfunded liability for retirement benefits. We've been trying to put money in every year for the, to build that fund up.
Nine sixty-six or nine ninety-six?
Yeah, nine.
Did I say it wrong?
Yeah, it's nine ninety-six.
Nine ninety-six, okay.
There you go.
Well, and she said it at first, I'm like, we don't have a nine sixty-six.
You're gonna let me roll with it, Kim, that's okay, I'm creating my own.
I didn't want to embarrass you, though.
Oh, no worry.
I'm sorry, I was confused.
That's OPEB, um, we, we've been funding that about two hundred thousand dollars a year, um, we need to put some serious money in there, so I thought it might be good to start bumping that up a little bit as we go up to two twenty-five. You know what, I, honestly, today I forgot to bring that, I mean, it's millions.
How much do we have funded?
Underfunded.
Underfunded.
Oh, um, well, the liability's about fifteen million, so we're about thirteen million short.
Seriously underfunded.
Yeah.
It's like a sinking hole.
But it's not unique to Free Town.
Yeah, I was gonna say Debbie, I was saying, saying it was like everyone, right, that's like.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I think except Wellesley, I think they're fully funded, but.
Wellesley, show-offs.
So I, I think it would be, you know, put in for the town to start trying to put a little bit more, a little bit more in that fund every year. And then the last, though, there's some capital equipment, nine thirty-one, and all the capital budgets. Okay, so, the, the capital budget, I don't know, do you, do you wanna do this with Kim, or you want me to do this? It's not a whole lot extra in it.
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Well, this is just a more, the, the continuing payments of some of this equipment that we've bought existing leases in the past, so we have, uh, just existing, the current year, cost of those existing leases on the top. The same thing with the dump truck, that's just the, uh, continuing lease payments for the existing leases. The new request that you see is a dump truck with a plow for the highway department, that was a request. I guess the one that we have is in rough shape, so that's the new, um, and then of course the new, the rotating police buses, there's an additional cost there for, you see that halfway down.
Nope.
So those are the new on the capital. Any questions on the capital? And then the next one is capital building, the, um, you'll see other stuff funded. The stuff that we have put in, I worked with Jeff on this, uh, HVAC system for the town hall, you know, um, a lot of you are aware of the town hall is rough, and we don't always, the, the heat is not consistent, the air conditioning is non-existent.
What number are we on here?
So this is the last.
Nine.
Say again?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty-two.
Yeah.
You gotta tilt your head a little bit.
So the two things that I thought this year, I worked with Jeff, the HVAC system for the town hall, um, this is the cost to replace system for both floors, heating and air conditioning. Right now, we all have window air conditioning units, um, and we have, our boiler is in rough shape, um, this would replace that and put in HVAC, which is, right now, I think we have baseboard heat, this would be hot air, where hopefully we'd get more consistent heat to each office, and, um, it, right now, it's really difficult. For instance, if a wind puts the heat up, it heats the outside of the office, but my office, it shuts the heat off for my office, it's, it's, it's very, very inconsistent and difficult to get heat in the offices as it sits. So that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and I got quotes on that. And then the, the other piece is to paint the old schoolhouse, there's lead paint on that, and it needs to be stripped and removed, and it's extremely expensive. I got a budget of fifty-four thou, I put this in at sixty, but I got a quote at fifty-four thousand, um, so that's in there. Those are the two projects that we're hoping to fund. Any questions on those?
Does Ferguson store generator, guru wiring, and building?
Is that already old, is that an old year, Bob?
Says, wait a minute, says, budget, budget fifty nineteen, oh, okay.
Look at the lines in blue, are the ones that are current year.
I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the bottom line here, tools.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
Alright, Debbie?
Okay. If you're the only one I have weights and measures, but that was level funded.
And that's a state assessment, there's no option.
Last but not least, Kim?
Okay, um, so my expenses are level funded, um, oh, I'm sorry, number one thirty-five, and then one thirty-six.
My book is terrible.
Sorry, I think everybody didn't know these numbers by heart.
You worked in mine.
Hey, I'm new.
Catch on.
That's right.
Okay. So, for one thirty-five, um, the expenses for the department are level funded, um, for personnel, um, there is a contractual increase for myself of one thousand eight hundred and twenty. And for my assistant, under the collective bargaining unit, um, there is a contractual increase of seven hundred and sixty-four. Any questions? Well, um, the town audit, um, we have an engagement letter, and they are going up two hundred and fifty dollars.
Easy peasy.
Short and sweet.
Yeah, I love it. Alright, so I think we are good here, folks?
So what I will do is, based on the items that, I believe Jeff is the only one who made adjustments to his request, I will update, um, the omnibus based on those changes and make sure that everybody has a copy, um, before next meeting.
Alright, excellent.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, thank you, Ed.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.